Welcome, everyone. Let's go on the record. First, I would ask that everybody mute themselves unless you're speaking, and that will cut down on the noise level and the potential audio feedback. Today is July 30th, 2024. The Missouri Public Service Commission has set this time for a local public hearing for members of the public to have a chance to comment about Evergy Missouri West's Generation Rate Increases Application, which is file number ER 20240189. The commission regulates the rates charged by public utility companies in Missouri to ensure that those rates are just and reasonable. The commission also regulates the quality of the service and the safety of the operations of public utilities. There are five commissioners. They are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the Senate. The commissioners employ a staff of engineers, accountants, attorneys, financial analysts, and other specialists in the field of utility regulation. My name is Carolyn Walker, and I am the regulatory law judge that will preside over this hearing. With me today are Chair Kayla Hahn, to my left Commissioner Madya Coleman, who is with us remotely, Commissioner Jason Holsman, who is at the end of the table here, Commissioner Glenn Kolkmeier, to my left again, and Commissioner John Mitchell. The commissioners have not made any decisions in this case, and they cannot answer any questions today because they have to remain impartial until all the evidence has been presented. So right now, we'll go through entries of appearance, and we'll start with Evergy Missouri West.
My name is Roger Steiner, and I'm attorney for Evergy Missouri West. My contact information has been provided to the court reporter.
Commission staff? We'll come back to her. The Office of Public Counsel.
John Kleiser, on behalf of the Missouri Office of the Public Counsel. My contact information is with the court reporter.
Okay. The process for this hearing will be to call the names that are listed on the sign-up sheet in the order that they appear. When I call your name, go ahead and come to the podium. I'll place you under oath and ask you to state and spell your name, and then you can offer your comments to the commission. We would like for people to, as well as identifying themselves, know that you can submit your comments to the commission on the website. If you hear a comment that's been made, you don't have to make it again, and we usually limit comments to five minutes. So the first person to testify is Greg, it looks like Ochoa? And I can't see, so if you could go ahead and state your name and spell it.
Sure. First name is Greg, G-R-E-G-G. Last name is O-C-H-O-A.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You may proceed with your comments.
May I please, Commissioner? I understand this rate case is about recovery of costs, so I don't have a problem with that, but I just wanted to bring a service reliability issue to your attention. I live in Lee Summit, and the power at my house has gone out about nine times this year, including three times this past Sunday. One of the outages this year lasted for 28 hours. It was over Memorial Day weekend, May 25th, May 26th. Since 2022, there have been 20 outages at my home. Most of the time, there were no weather involved, no high wind, anything of that nature. Contacted Evergy, received text messages from them as the power outages would go out and come back on, and some of the explanation was wildlife, debris, unknown, and equipment failure. So I understand, you know, with a lot of modern technology, 20 outages over that period of time seems a lot. So again, I just wanted to bring this reliability issue to your attention. I have contacted Evergy and have the times and dates of the outages. If the commission would like that, I would submit that as an exhibit.
Thank you.
Should I give that to the court reporter?
Sure.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Michelle Arps? Can you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Absolutely. It's Michelle, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, last name Arps, A-R-P as in Paul, S as in Sam.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please begin.
Yes, thank you. So I have a list that I submitted to the Public Service Commission. I've still yet to hear back on any of those. But the first one that I have, from the first email, and I will limit this, the first one is there's no meter number that is present on your bill, in their app, or on their full website any longer since the time of use came into effect. So there's no meter number, there's no previous read for your bill, and no last read for your bill on the billings. Okay? That's the first thing I have. The second thing I have is that their quarterly report that they have a public record on Business Wire was stating 13.42% plus a .57 rate increase for fuel starting in 2025 for the Evergy Metro West service territory. Evergy Metro West had an increase on January 9th when they changed their rates. And then also, we had additional increases per that same Business Wire, but transparency seemed to be a concern. Per Business Wire, 2324, their bar chart shows previous rate increases for Evergy Metro West of 7.6%. The chart is very hard to read, and if you do not reference the note number four, you will miss it. It's very, it's down way far in the documentation there. But they were trying to put that out there, that there hasn't been any rate increases since 2017. Okay? Also, another concern I have, I know that a lot of this rate increase has to do with going away from coal and going to the gas-fired plants. However, we, the Sibley Plant closed in 2018, Montrose closed in 2018, Lake Road decreased their capacity in 2020. So we're asking, you know, they're asking for, you know, rate increase for gas-fired plants, but this is only after they've taken away the majority of what at least feeds our peak in relation to, you know, the coal. So, and that, those seem to be what just feeds this area, the Evergy Metro West. So my biggest question on that is, is why would we allow, knowing, you know, it's public knowledge that everybody knows, and even the government talks about it on the federal level, that, you know, the aging infrastructure? And we understand that as customers. However, the concern I have is we get rid of our source of power, and then we come back and demand a rate increase so we can do something different. So that's a concern. And, you know, up until this meeting, there was, you know, a Senate Bill 757 that was out there to stop this very thing of closing your source of power, whether it's, it doesn't, you know, say what source, doesn't necessarily say coal, but any source of generation, then that needs to be, you know, they need to show due diligence that they have another source before they decommission our sources of power. Because right now, we're not even getting our power from this region. It's, you know, our peak is supposedly coming from Mississippi. Okay? So that's a concern. But also, we wonder as a customer how it could be that, this is hard to say, but as a customer, how can it be that if you're going to try and be energy efficient, and we've gotten more energy efficient, and we're trying to become more energy efficient, but then whenever we become more energy efficient and we lower the amount of our usage, then the rates get increased because they need to get a profit. So that seems like a counterproductive situation. You know, you use less, and so they make less, so they have to increase their rates. Okay? So that's part of it. And then another thing, you know, if you go solar with Evergy, you know, you can read that 12-page document online, if you go solar with them, you give up your energy credits to them. So then they get to use that then as bargaining to get the things that they want and need. So that's a concern.
Time?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Appreciate your consideration.
Marvin Rollinson?
I'm Preston Smith. That's P-R-E-S-T-O-N-S-M-I-T-H. I'm from Blue Springs.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
You may begin.
Okay. In this rate increase, Evergy says that they have nothing to do with solar and wind power, nothing with renewable energy sources. But my contention is that you cannot separate this company or their resources that easily because, simply because they are having a shortfall in the solar and energy production. That's why in this rate increase, they're asking to go out and purchase a natural gas factory, a plant in Pleasant Hill. This is shortfall. And also, it's because that they're dealing with many different aspects of this company that I think that you can't just stand, have a standalone product that separates itself. So I'd like to talk briefly about the Evergy's overall goals. And it says from the press release from April of 2021, "Their goal is to reduce carbon emissions by 70% by 2030 and achieve net zero carbon emissions by 2045. There was no evidence that this ever appeared in any company document or in their integrated resource plan to the Public Service Commission before 2021." Out of their $11.6 billion in new capital investments they have in the company, they're talking $2.1 billion, there's going to be primary renewable sources. And if you look at their other aspects of their business, Evergy has not done well in this renewable area. For example, in Western Oklahoma, the Persimmon Creek Wind Farm, 17,000 wind turbines, purchased for $250 million and a 20-year payback of at most $191 million, $60 million shortfall. And I believe this shortfall is what is going to be on the backs of customers like me and people living here in this area, because we're having to make up that difference. And if you look a little bit closer, it's only been the last few years that Evergy's taken this approach. For example, just in the last couple of years, they went to a group out in Palo Alto, California called the Electric Power Research Institute. And this is from their investor documents that they have on their own website from Evergy. And the group that they went to, the name of the seminar was Understanding Climate Scenarios and Goal Setting Activities. And you know what? Perhaps they were able to set these goals of what they had wanted to achieve, these net zero carbon emissions. And during the Q and A time, I asked them directly twice, if given the choice between effective and cheap carbon-based fuels versus the renewable fuels, which one would you choose? And I couldn't get a straight answer. So I would ask the commission, perhaps you can get a straight answer from them, because I think that's really the guts of what we're talking about. Because we're talking about one rate increase here tonight, at the rate they're going, and when they close, a coal plant that produces 4.5 megawatts, they close that one along with all the other coal plants they've shut down, it's not going to be the last rate increase that we're going to talk about, because that is the trend of where this company is headed. And so I'm just telling you, the research that I've seen, the kind of rate increases they're talking about here for us is really unprecedented around this country. I saw one rate increase in California, around 25%. Another one in Oregon, Portland, I think it was about 20%. But for the Midwest, my goodness, I think the next highest, largest, the next largest increase that I could find was in Wisconsin at about 5%. Now, they say, gee, it's been a long time since we've had a rate increase. Well, no, we've been pelleted just a little bit at a time, and this is the first time we've had this formal hearing. So here again, I fully dispute the total overall percentages they're talking about tonight, because I think we've had other increases that have been sort of subtle that we haven't been able to really pinpoint.
One minute.
All right. My last minute, I wanted to say that it looks like from the estimates based on their, when they shut the coal plant, there's going to be a short-term capacity gap, because there are some needs here locally, but they're going to be not only buying from elsewhere, but their total renewable fuel from wind and solar over the next 20 years, they're saying over 5 megawatts. So this is a disturbing trend. It's, I think it's bad policy, and it's also making us pay a whole lot more for something that is just outrageously expensive when we had cheaper alternatives in the past. So essentially, they've gone woke, and they're making us broke. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, I would like to give the staff of the Public Service Commission another opportunity to enter their appearance for the record.
Thank you. My name's Carolyn Kerr, attorney for the staff of Public Service Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Kerr. Chad Buck?
My name is Chad Buck, B-U-C-K.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I absolutely do.
Please proceed.
Thank you for your time tonight, Commissioner, and thank you for the opportunity to appear for you. Earlier, I spoke and attended tonight, not thinking I would speak tonight, but I came tonight asking a question of, in a previous Q and A session, about the, to Evergy, about the demand loads associated with the hyperscale data centers that fall within the Missouri West district. Much of this tax, or much of this increase, and one of the questions that was asked was how much of that load and usage is forecasted for these type of companies? These are multi-billion dollar companies that are looking to expand because of the need for AI. Data centers are a growing industry, and they're coming to a Missouri and Kansas region, in the Midwest, coming from the likes of Loudoun County, Virginia. And I would encourage you guys to take a look at what's gone on in the power sources of Loudoun County, Virginia, and some of the concerns that those citizens have had as it related to the invasion of data centers into our community. While they're necessary, they're necessary in our current lifestyle and our future lifestyle that we operate in with AI and the need for data storage, the thing I ask of this commission is that they take time and consider about the property owners and the citizens and the people that live in the rural portions of Missouri, that they consider that the power lines and the infrastructure and the wind and solar that is being placed as a need to power these facilities is done so in consideration of people that have staked their whole lives in many of these small rural communities, that are now looking to be faced with eminent domain or a large power pole placed right in the middle of their front yard, or their farmland where they've raised their families and attempted to leave a legacy and a family for their children are at stake. The need for additional power is coming. Evergy has asked, or has said that, they're here today asking to approve a rate increase because of their purchase of a Dogwood Gas Facility in Pleasant Hill, Missouri, in Cass County. In addition to those expenditures, the monies that are needed for future growth may be those required for a single user, the Googles of the world, the Metas of the world, and the data center providers. And we ask that that be done in transparency. I live in an area where my parents live right behind, but within 50 feet, where a hyperscale data center is being proposed to be placed without any setbacks, because of the loose zoning laws that you'll find in many of these small jurisdictions. Evergy and the state has, I'll just say, the power in the solar and wind have massive amounts of money with attorneys to go into these smaller communities and to take liberties with their commissions and their citizenry. And I ask that the commission would place a moratorium on power needs for future data center growth until there can be such a time as a comprehensive plan to look at how data centers fit within our identity of our society. Much like the landfill measure that took up just recently in the state of Missouri, which we are part of, that decision required that now landfills be within, not be within one mile of residential or city center. That was a smart legislative move. Data centers are much like that. Most people think data centers are harmless, but quite honestly, they're not. The research is out there. And we ask that you guys take the time and understand, it's not about this one source of entity. It's about all the power, infrastructure, the peaking stations, the substations, and additional things that will come to feed these behemoths of power. The request for power, the request for power is likening of 1 gigawatt of power. That's 750,000 homes of power. That's a lot of power that's going to be deployed in a very small set of assets, and are they paying their fair share? These billion-dollar companies are asking for us, the citizens of Missouri, to pay for these costs, and our property rights and our quality of life being protected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I want to see if Marvin Rollinson is here? No? All right. Is there anyone else who would like to offer testimony today? Come to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Matt, M-A-T-T, Roberts, R-O-B-E-R-D, like David S.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
I'm Matt Roberts. I am an Evergy customer in Blue Springs. My concern tonight related to this rate increase is with reliability. I've had a couple of outages earlier this year. One of them was in the middle of April. One of them was, it was a little later on, it was end of May, first of June. And, you know, I'm used to short outages, you know, you get a storm or something, the power goes out for an hour, that's not that big a deal. These two outages were eight-plus hours each. They involved pretty much all of my subdivision, 150-plus homes. The power did come back on, but, you know, I had to, and I didn't, you know, have any suffer a loss, I had to go buy some ice, put that in the freezer, things like that. But as it relates to the rate increase, I would hope that Evergy would be able to show more service reliability in order to get their rate increase approved. You know, don't keep me in the dark for a long time and then ask for money, you know? Fix the reliability first and then ask for money after that. So that's the only consideration I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else asking. Is there a hand?
Is there?
Come up.
Patricia Harms, H-A-R-M-S, and I'm speaking to you this evening.
Let me swear you in before you talk.
I'm sorry.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Thank you. I'm speaking tonight as a residential customer for, golly, well, all my life, 60-plus years, of KCPL and various subsets of purchases and merged corporations and whatever. My concern with this most recent rate increase, from the handout that was provided tonight, is that there seems to be confusion within Evergy on how many rate increases they've actually had, because as a homeowner, I can tell you that I have reduced the overall usage of my residence over the past 10 years by 20 to 25%, yet the bill keeps going up, and there's not just one line item on there for charge, it is customer charge, this rate group, this rate group, this rate group, this Rest Ram something, this other category. Now, there's a recovery fee for the winter storm of February, whenever it was, that I didn't use additional electricity because my power was out. Surprised. So my concern is that when they're asking for another rate increase, it's not well documented what exactly is the reason. We're buying natural gas facilities to do what? I thought the goal was, we're supposed to be reducing usage of fossil fuels, and then they talk about, well, no, this doesn't have anything to do with fossil fuels. Well, yes, it does, you do. The communications coming from Evergy have been confusing, to say the least, over the past minimum 10 years, for every three months, there's a rate increase. We've been granted an increase in this little junk fee, this little junk fee, this little junk fee, and this little junk fee. Seriously, there are at least 15 line items that comprise the monthly bill now that's a fee for something, and quite honestly, I don't believe that Evergy has fully figured out how to do a correct bill since the rollout of time of use plans. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? All right. Seeing no one, I will, is there somebody coming? I'm sorry, I can't see.
You're screwing into the lights. Good evening. My name is Scott Howe, S-C-O-T-T-H-O-W-E. Did you need address or just a resident?
Just your name is fine.
Okay. So.
Let me swear you in before you start speaking, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I've got basically two things that I'd like to discuss or bring up. First, given that Evergy during the question and answer period earlier this evening, they did state that with the new rate plan that came out in last summer, the time use plan, they haven't had enough time to evaluate the benefit of that to them as far as whether or not that was actually increasing their revenue or a break even. They speculate or believe it will be kind of a break even, but they don't know. So I would argue that, given that being the case, them saying they need more time to analyze that, that it be analyzed before another rate hike takes place, because I know a family of four kids getting home from school, getting home from work between 4:00 and 8:00, impossible to not use electricity. We're trying to do laundry, we're trying to get ready to eat dinner, get ready for the next day, kind of an impossible request to cut back power usage during that time. So our bills have gone up significantly. And then my next piece would be in regards to the large-scale data centers or other large-scale corporate users such as Google, that the load letter be provided to the commission and made public before any rate increases be allowed for that. And also, eminent domain not be allowed to be used for adding new transmission lines to provide power to large-scale users such as hyperscale data centers or even any single user. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask again if there's anyone who would like to comment, and I'm going to be more patient.
My name's Justin Racette, R-A-C-E-T-T-E.
Do you solemnly swear that your testimony today will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes. I'll make it, I'll make it quick. I'll make it, I'll make it quick. Based off of some of the information that Evergy laid out, and some of the information they have on their website as well, they like to brag about going carbon neutral, which just happens to coincide with the year 2030. I think we all know what the significance of that is. They like to brag about ESG. It's well-known that ESG is not a moneymaker. It does not help companies on the bottom line, and they're going into renewable, you know, wind energy, solar energy, I'm fine with hydro, but these are not moneymakers. These are bad, poor business decisions for the bottom line, and they should have to eat that cost instead of making us pay for it. So, just like, I believe his name is Preston, said, they're going woke, and they need to eat it themselves.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
My name is David Northcraft, N-O-R-T-H-C-R-A-F-T.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. I have two comments, technical comments. I question the wisdom of a decision made some time ago that is reflected in this rate increase proposal of transmitting our electricity from five hundred miles away. I think that that is, was a bad decision. I think our sources of electricity need to be closer for no other reason than winter storms and/or these days terrorist attacks. The other thing is, I want, I've been involved in the manufacture and sales of anti-terrorist barrier systems in the past. We are vulnerable. Our infrastructure is vulnerable to terrorist attack. I petition the commission to insist upon a rate increase that they protect our infrastructure, the electrical infrastructure, from possible terrorist and vandalism. For example, some of the larger transformers in the world are not made in this country, and it takes three to four years to make one of them. And these people, the malevolent, they know where they are, and they can knock from Clarksville, Clarksdale, Mississippi, to here is five hundred miles. There's gotta be some high transmission, high voltage lines between here and there. The other thing, last thing I wanna say is, I would insist that the commission provide some vehicle for investigation, investigation of newer-designed nuclear-powered plants. For example, it's, the physics is beyond me, but the thorium design, to me, seems pretty feasible. It's an older design, was never used, but you can run up to a gigawatt in small amounts. There's very little waste when it's done. Like I said, the physics is beyond me, but I think that needs to be investigated. Thank you.
Your Honor. Your Honor, may I pose a question?
Pardon me? Sure.
Sir, really quick, you mentioned transmitting energy from five hundred miles away. Can you specifically, what you're referencing there?
Well, my, my map app here says from Clarksdale, Mississippi, to Lee Summit is five hundred miles.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay, I'd like to thank all of the participants today for their testimony. If you have additional comments, or there's someone who could not be present that you know who would like to comment, you may make written comments by going to the Missouri Public Service Commission's webpage. If you have questions of the Office of Public Counsel, go to M-O-P-C-O at O-P-C dot mo dot gov. I'd like to ask if the commissioners have any questions or comments before we adjourn.
I just wanna thank those that came and participated in the public hearing tonight. I know that you have other things that you could do with your time in the evening, whether that's spend time with your family, you know, work at your job, or any other host of things, but without your feedback and comments, we wouldn't have any other way of being alerted to your thoughts about the company's request. And so I just appreciate your time and appreciate your comments, and I look forward to learning more. Thank you.
I just wanna echo the chairman's comments, and thank everyone for coming out and giving us their, their comments this evening. Thank you again.
All right. We will adjourn the hearing. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Good evening.
Thank you, Judge.